And go ahead, Paul, read your stuff.
In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, on November 24th, 2020, public meeting for the planning board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, meeting will be televised via Falmouth Committee. Two, real-time public comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing virtual meeting software for public access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and the comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted text will be written at the appropriate point in the meeting. Zooming instruction. Enter the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following web w.falmouthmass.us backslash 1112 backslash planning board. Or please plan on 10 to 15 minutes of preparation time to log in, though it may be less if you have previously used a Zoom on the device, you will access this meeting. Additionally, public comments may be sent in advance to falmouth@planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents, audio or visual files may also be submitted via email. Submitted email comments and documents will be made part of the record, may be read into the record, summarized, or displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the chair. Four, applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may appear remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may contact the planning department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to falmouth@falmouthma.gov so that they may be displayed for remote public access.
Okay, thank you. And then, Paul, the minutes, and we've got quite a number of them here.
We have reviewed the minutes for the last five meetings, including October 13th, October 20th, October 27th, November 10th, and November 17th. And I recommend approval of these minutes with the corrections.
So, are there any comments? Okay, Charlotte? You're on mute, Charlotte.
I don't know exactly what happened to tie up so many of the minutes, but I find it very difficult to recall back far enough to even think about corrections.
Well, we had a number of issues. One was I wasn't receiving the draft minutes, and I think it might have been there on my pod, I'm not quite sure. But I worked it out with Melinda, and were able to get them last week. So I completed review of all then and have recommended approval tonight.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments? May I have a show of hands to approve? Okay, so there are five, six of us, the total present. And I don't know how many of you heard this, but John Drooly may be a bit late tonight. He was up in Boston on business. So he is planning to join us. Now, we have an approval not required. Applicant Donald A. and Janet R. Muller plan of land to divide one parcel into two lots at 183 Old Main Road. Tom, did you wish to comment on this, or are the Mullers present? Okay, Tom?
Yes, ma'am, if I may, I'm going to share my screen and bring up the A&R plan. Give me just a moment, dramatic pause. As I mentioned to the chair earlier, been a busy day for the building. We had some internet issues, and the toilets all stopped. The good news is they're both fixed now, but we didn't have everything quite up on the screen as quick as we'd like to. So just bear with us as we work through a couple of these things. So I am going to share my screen, I believe, and you should see a plan on Old Main Street. We're going to make it a little bigger for you. I'm going to make it a little smaller for you. And scroll over here. So this is an A&R plan for to divide this parcel into two. Lot B at the rear, 3.05 acres, as it says on the note at the end of the, at the bottom of the plan, that this 3.5 acres is to be conveyed to the 300 committee. We have sent a note to, give me a hint.
What?
No, to Holmes McGrath.
Holmes McGrath, okay.
We're going to see who did the plan. To give us a notation on Lot B, that is a non-buildable parcel, because it doesn't have frontage on a way. The Trinity C bicycle path does not count as frontage under Massachusetts Generalizable Lot. So while the plan is in good form, we will be getting a revised plan that has a note on Lot B that says not a buildable lot. And with that, it is proper for endorsement from our perspective, and the board wanted to make a motion that you should have received that I didn't send to you, that essentially says approve without taking into account buildability. I believe the plan is fine for its endorsement.
Do you want subject to a notation?
Yes, please.
Okay, so may I have a motion to that effect? Okay, so Lot, Lot?
Lot B.
We can approve it, endorse it, but subject to, and then a statement on Lot B that it is not a buildable lot. So I need a motion to that effect. Paul?
Yeah, I have a question, if I may.
Yes.
I didn't realize Lot B was being conveyed to the 300 committee. Did you say that?
I did. And I'll point out, for the purposes of the A&R process, it doesn't matter who or what. It is not a buildable lot because it doesn't have frontage. So whether it was being conveyed to the 300 committee or being conveyed to someone else, that's not a parameter under the A&R process. But asking for a statement, a note on the plan is. So we're perfectly within our rights to ask for a note on Lot B, as we have previously for other plans.
Okay.
Call up on that.
Yes, sir.
If it's conveyed to 300 committee, there are no restrictions on future development if they work to get access, say, along the north side of Lot A.
Uh, not that I know of, but keep in mind the plan that we have before, so those existing conditions, and no development can take place on it because they're separating it from Lot A, the lot that has the frontage. So until they establish frontage on Old Main Street, then that's not a buildable parcel.
Well, if there were a conveyor access on Lot A to Lot B, they would be able to have access. Is that correct?
Yes, and if I could bring up the GIS, which I can, I tried a couple of minutes ago to see where that frontage, and actually, the lot to the north of that belongs to a Virginia Valley Ella, some of you may know, or at least our former, she may have conveyed that property to 300 committee as well. But as I said, for the purposes of subdivision control and for the A&R process, if a plan has frontage on a way, the board will challenge forthwith endorse it within 21 days. In this case, you don't have to make that determination because Lot B doesn't have frontage, but the board is within its right to request a note that Lot B is not a buildable lot.
So the motion that I would be looking for is that we endorse this A&R, we normally say without regard to buildability, but we will endorse this A&R subject to the addition of not a buildable lot on Lot B?
All moved?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or questions? Okay, with show of hands, all in favor? Okay, all six of us here are in favor. Next, we go to public meeting. The applicant is Robert Munier. I don't know if I pronounced that correctly. Site plan review application to construct a detached accessory apartment located at 200 Moreland Road. And Michaela just flashed up on the screen here because she's going to head this up. And I don't know if there are any other representatives. I believe Tom Bunker was planning to be here as well.
That's correct. We're just promoting him now.
Okay.
Paul, looks like he has a question, ma'am.
Paul?
Notice of this public meeting was sent to 11 Butts by Regal Mall and published on November 6th.
Okay. Okay. Oh, hello, we've got two bunkers here tonight.
Thank you. You get two for the price of one. Yep, for the record, for the record, I am Tom Bunker of BSS Design, and we prepared the site plan for this property, and Beatrice is the architect for this project. And so I will, I will share the screen and go into the site plan, and then we'll go into a little bit about the architectural plan also.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I think Michaela is planning on doing a bit of a thumbnail sketch of what we have. Is that correct, Michaela?
Yeah, I'm happy to touch on some points. Okay. So the applicant is proposing a studio apartment in a detached garage. There is currently an existing space above the detached garage. They're looking to just kind of finish it and make it livable up there. We did receive a correction in the staff report. It says a one-car garage. I apologize. It is a two-car garage with a one-door garage. So I just want to clear that up upfront. We also received a revised health referral that the septic is for five bedrooms, and that because the space is currently existing above the garage, it is a five-bedroom lot. There's four bedrooms in the primary residence, and then health is considering the space that exists above the garage, the fifth bedroom. So they will not be expanding the bedroom count. So that was a correction that came in after the fact. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of those corrections in the staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Michaela. And Tom and Beatrice?
Okay, yeah, thank you. So what you should have on this screen in front of you is the site plan by BSS Design. Zoom in a little bit here. It's Lot 30A has about three-quarters of an acre, 31,709 square feet. The total coverage on the lot by structures is 8.0%. And with the addition of a deck, we, basically, the second means of egress from the house, the deck and steps in the, I mean, of the apartment, the deck and steps in the rear of the building and in the slight expansion of the deck in the front of the building, it will have a total coverage proposed of 8.65, which is well under the allowed 20% lot coverage. There was a new five-bedroom septic system installed not very long ago down in this location, and that did take into account the four bedrooms in the house. And it was, the system was connected to the accessory structure at the time that it was installed. There's already a powder room in that, in that building. You can point out that this is, well, it's a lot with two frontages, I guess, and we're considering this to be a, an accessory structure in a front yard. Existing house on the Moreland roadside is 57 and a half feet from the street, and the garage, the accessory structure currently is 56.6 feet, but with the slight increase in the deck and a couple more steps on that side of the house, it's now 51 and a half feet from Moreland Road. So it's set back far enough to be permitted as a, an accessory structure in a front yard, that being at least 50 feet back. So this is the existing building and the existing accessory building. And you can see here the proposed deck and steps. It's a little bit larger. If you looked at it, this is actually, this area here, this deck and steps is at grade, basically. And so on this side, the main entrance to this apartment will pretty much act great, where the, it's just a couple steps up to this deck from here, but at the back of it, on the house side of this structure, it's a full story down, as it is on the, the entry side to the garage. It's a, it's a full story down, elevation 57. So we have two car, two parking spaces in the garage, and, you know, plenty of other parking, at least two other parking spaces in the driveway. I can mention in the engineering department referral, these old, old walls, probably built when the house was put in in the 20s before any zoning or any other, other restrictions were put on. Probably was even a private road at the time when, when these walls were built. If, if they need to be licensed, and I can't remember if that's your say or the ZBA say, but if it's, if it's a requirement to license them, then we can submit an application to the selectmen to do so. So this project, basically, is really not changing much of anything. It's an existing structure, which is a small expansion to create two means of egress to the apartment on that floor. Now, Beatrice will talk about the architecture.
Yeah, we are not proposing any changes on the garage level, other than what is required by the building department for fire code. On the second floor, we are expanding the dormers that are currently there. We're extending it on both sides, as well as laterally, left and right. The ridge is at the same height. We're not increasing the height of the building, and we are not increasing the actual footprint where the dormers start. They are, they are in the same footprint. It's just more headroom due to the new dormer configuration. Currently, in the existing second floor, we have a powder room that actually is where we are proposing our deck with the water view. The rest of the space inside is just an open space. It is a bedroom, and has finished walls to some degree. And to some degree, you see the sheet, the beadboard sheathing of the old structure. It's currently unheated, and what we are proposing is to heat it and finish it to keep it with the style of the, of the other, of the main house. We have a small kitchenette, or kitchen, all very small appliance size, you know, the apartment-sized appliances, and it's an open floor plan. There is no bedroom. It's so small. The overall size is only slightly over 300, I think 310 square feet, and it is, yeah, 320 square feet, and it only takes up about a little bit over 1, 8% of the, it's only about 8% of the overall size of the main house. We have a small bathroom here, and we have a closet that will also have a washer dryer hookup, which is a requirement by the building department. And the house will have a mini split for heat and cooling. And again, it's such a small unit that we, we can mount it on the gable end wall. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Does anybody have questions? Bob?
Just out of curiosity, how old is this garage?
I, I think it was built at the same time, so in the 20s, 1920s.
Oh, neat. Thanks.
Yep.
Shall we do, stop, take the screen down?
Well, that's fine, because I can't see anybody else to recognize here except four of the planning board. Thank you, Tom. Jim?
I believe somewhere in the text with, that's referring to the driveways, there's a typo, or else I don't understand it. It refers to tracks. I think it means trucks. There's just, I have no problem with what they're doing. I just think there's a typographical error in section, one of the sections referring to the zoning and parking on driveway access. I just believe it's a typo. That's the only thing I found wrong with this thing. I think it's fantastic.
Okay, Paul?
I have two comments, if I may. One is, I love the hand-drawn architectural drawings. I love that.
Thank you. I'm one of the only ones left.
Yeah, I like that a lot. And secondly, it's a very clever use of this land. I compliment you on the actual things you try to get the dormers out and keep that space, make a major change in that building. It's very clever and very innovative.
Thank you.
Okay. I just have a comment about the stone wall, because I wouldn't want to see anybody have to go through any hoops on that. I mean, if it's in the 20s, that's darn near 100 years old. And we do have protections in this town against features such as that. So I wonder if that can be used to say, no, it's fine the way it is. As a matter of fact, we would be prohibited from removing it. Do you know anything about that, Tom?
I don't know. I just, I know it came up earlier, and there was a question, not on this project, but on other projects, if it's public or private. And my only guess is, I don't know when, when Moreland Road was taken, but my only guess is that it was probably built at a time when the road was private. And I would think that as such, the town would have taken it with the wall there and taken it subject to the wall being existing. And, you know, therefore, we shouldn't have to license it, would be my opinion.
Yeah. Tom Bott?
Yes, ma'am.
Is, do you know anything about this, and how the owners and the bunkers can avoid having to license it? Because it is historical wall, I would say.
Well, two things. The town is not subject to adverse possession. So you, you can't have it because you had it for 20 years. Secondly, I believe, and Michaela can speak to that, it was a referral perhaps from the engineering division. But I will say this, that I have had a number of reviews for the Board of Selectmen where someone has asked for a license using something within the right of way. And I haven't heard anyone say, and one particular one was about an eight-foot-high retaining wall that ran for 75 feet right up to the edge of the pavement. Wasn't like in the right of way. It was like at the edge of the pavement, and no one told them to rip it out. So I don't believe that the wall is in peril. But if we got a referral from our engineering division, as you know, we typically tend to follow through on those. So that may be, I believe, in our, in our draft decision, that the planning board recommends that the use of the wall within the public right of way is licensed. And we can confer, you know, more with, with counsel on that in engineering. But that's what I would think.
Okay. Tom, is there anybody there in the participants who would want to comment? Oh, Jim has board comment.
I just want to make it as easy as possible for this accessory apartment to happen. I know Tom's trying to dot all the i's and cross the t's, but this has been there for a long time, and I, I just think we should approve it.
Well, we could do that, but then it goes to the ZBA, too.
Right, but without this referral from engineering.
We have no choice in that, though, Jim. Is there anybody?
I think we do.
Well, we can do the referral, but is there anybody amongst the participants who wishes to comment? Bob?
How onerous is it to, isn't it an application to the selectmen to?
I think so.
So I don't see where that would be that difficult.
It's not terribly onerous. We, we licensed, we, a couple of years ago, we licensed some, some steps on the bike path to go down one side of the bank and up the other. It's just a matter of going to a couple of hearings with the selectmen.
Yeah.
It's not that bad, onerously.
Okay.
And I think it would settle it once and for all, because the property may change hands in the future, and this might come up again. So if it is licensed once and for all, then future owners won't have to deal with it.
So in our, in our decision, we would simply indicate that we see no problem with the wall, then, to give them support in their application.
Right.
Now, if everybody has done on the board commenting and questioning, is there anybody amongst the participants who wishes to say anything? Tom, can you tell?
I am looking at the list of attendees. I'm looking at the list of attendees, and I don't see anybody who I'm familiar with for this particular application. I see a couple of folks for future applications.
Right.
There's nothing in the chat either.
No.
Okay. Okay, so, yes, Paul?
Before we go, I'd like to just mention, understand that Tom and Beatrice had a major anniversary recently. Congratulations.
Thank you.
What anniversary is this?
Well, I'm trying to.
Never correctly.
Another wedding, but we were over 30.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so, as you all know, our next meeting is a continuation of the recodification. So it would be the meeting on the 8th that we would have a decision ready. And I believe our staff has sensed that we are really all in favor of this, and we want to be as gentle as possible in the application for a license for the stone wall. I think we could even mention that it's part and parcel of what the property is.
Yep.
Okay?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Prepare a positive motion for the board for December.
Correct. And so, since this is a site plan review, we're just, we don't close it. We just continue it till the decision.
All right.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, you have a nice one. Are you joining anybody, or is it just your family?
Our family's joining us in Falmouth, just a couple of them.
Yeah, great. Enjoy.
All right.
Bye.
Next, the applicant is Garrison Da Silva, site plan review application to construct an attached accessory apartment located at 11 Andy's Lane. And Tom is going to describe this. He has been working very closely with the applicant to make this happen. And Tom, I think I would depend upon you to explain things.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we do have in, in the audience, Batania and Claudemir, who are the applicant and her contractor as well. So this is a fairly unique circumstance. We have an accessory house with an existing accessory apartment that was approved in 2003 by the zoning board of appeals. So there's a special permit by the zoning board of appeals for an accessory. So there's a special permit by the zoning board of appeals for an accessory structure. What we saw with the initial plans that were very confusing to everybody, which is why I went out to the site and met the applicant out there. Batania was very gracious to come and meet me on the site. She works in the vineyard, so she took the vote over during the day to sort of walk through what was going on on the site. So there is an existing, there was an existing apartment apparently in the basement approved by the ZBA in two thousand and three. So in effect, what they're trying to do is move the accessory apartment in an attached structure from where it was up to the second floor. So we took the plans that they had. We removed all the things that were uh, were there previously. And so I have got the revised plans that I forwarded onto the board. Uh, and I will bring them up in a minute, but I wanted, I I asked Batania to sort of talk about her experience with this because they've been at this for about a year and a half. We've had a lot of conversations with the building commissioner and the uh, the health agent about the septic system, about the the building requirements and things like that. And I think we've got everything sort of ironed out uh, that the structure is uh, the proper size, the accessory structure is the proper size. Uh, it's just a matter of presenting this information to the board. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna let Batania uh, talk a little bit and then when we get ready to talk about the plans, I'll share the screen and bring the plans up. If that's okay with you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight, Batania.
Hi, uh, I I just, when we bought the house in May, uh, we saw the first, the house the first time in February. House was with a lot of damage. We, like, there are no way we could leave in the house. We need to like do a demolition because was very bad, was toxic, a lot of mold, the floor, walls, everything. When we bought the house, this is our, it's the first time we buy, we bought a house. And um, the house we bought as a multifamily. If anyone wants to check the Zillow, it's posted as a multifamily. Because it was a, an apartment in a second floor, there stairs there, everything uh, set as an apartment with one bedroom. We did not know that apartment just could stay that size. So when we bought, we thought about, because was multifamily, we thought about to extend that apartment for the entire second floor and made the the main house on the first floor. Not adding any square feet in the house, but just making that apartment, that small apartment as a, you know, the same size as the main house, using the entire second floor, not just half. Um, and then we, we sent all the paperwork to the, to the town. We had the, the approve, we have the permit to do, you know, the, what we thought we could do. And then we framed. And next, last year in December twenty-fourth, like Christmas Eve, I received a phone call from the town saying that was not right, that I could not do that. So we stopped everything since that day. And we, uh, Claudia and I, we went to the town to talk to the, the, to Tom and, I mean, to Rod Palmer and to s- to ask what happened, why, what 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 went wrong with the the, the construction? And they said we could not have a multifamily that was not a zoning for multifamily. And we started asking, what should we do? How do we gonna do this? Because we bought this house and um, as a construction loan, it's very high the rates and everything. We live here in the island. We bought the house thinking we can move, you know, to our own house. We had like a hard time here leaving. So that's why we decided to buy a house and we wanna have that done very soon as possible. And we keep sending the town plannings, um, you know, pain engineer every time. They said, no, you are missing this. We need more that. No, this is wrong. So there a year and a half we bought. And since December twenty-four, we are um, drawing a lot of plans for the house. And I hope now, uh, the plan that Tom has in in his hands. It's the right one, the right um, size for the apartment. First, uh, they said, I did not know I just can have four bedroom. We made a plan before for five bedroom. Counting with the in-law apartment and the main house. I did not know I just could have four. So we changed again. And I just hope that now, you know, all the plans will be approved. And I can keep going with that because my family and I, we are having a very hard time, you know, paying the mortgage. That's very expensive because it's a construction loan. Um, living here in the island, it's very expensive to have a very high more um, renting here. And it's like we already spent much more than we were expecting. We are in a very hard situation, you know, paying mortgage and rent for all this time. And we need to redo a lot of things again, spend more money than we were expecting. So I just hope that plan, it's okay to be approved so we can move forward and finish this house and, you know, moving to Falmouth and leave our life very, very, it's been very, very hard for us.
Okay, Tom?
All right, well, let me bring up the plans. So I hope that you can see the basement plan in front of you. And so what I asked them to do is is basically take the plans that they started with and give us the thing because we had uh, existing and proposed on the plan sheets, but then in the middle plan sheet, they didn't have both existing proposed. So on each sheet, uh, we have had them prepare what's existing, what's proposed. The houses, your pictures that I had sent you before has been thoroughly gutted. Uh, and what you see uh, is what's on the plan uh, now. So here you see the existing basement on the left, which looks a lot like the proposed basement where they have ripped out all the walls. Uh, taken out the bathroom that was downstairs. The previous plan showed a kitchen uh, and a bathroom and essentially an apartment down in the basement. Now, from the ZBA's permit, I saw the requirements, but I never saw the plan for exactly where the apartment was. But there's nothing in the house right now, except for these frame walls. Uh, there is a stair that comes up from the basement. It's an open stairway that comes up on this corner of the house that has been installed. Uh, and that is the existing conditions and the proposed conditions for the basement. Uh, we come up to uh, pardon me, as I scroll past the second floor, uh, to the first floor. So once again, the existing conditions uh, on the first floor are the framing. Uh, in fact, they had pulled out the stairs that went up to the second floor and they'll be putting them back in because they didn't get to the apartment. So the proposed first floor has the open uh, living room. This is where the kitchen previously was. Uh, the previous plans actually had a wall in here. Uh, the health agents considered that second room to be a bedroom because of the enclosure, so they've opened this up to be one great room with a set of stairs that goes up. Uh, there is a a master bath uh, downstairs. And in the back of the house is the uh, living room or dining room uh, and kitchen area. The stairs to access the accessory unit come up on the side here as you see. And there is a second set that comes up to the front of the house. There was not an opportunity to put stairs at the back part of the house because of the proximity of the house to the side yard setback. So the stairs are uh, both at the front in two different places along the house. And then we get up to the second floor, uh, you'll see the uh, unit currently existing upstairs. It's just framed. There's no thing, nothing, not a thing in the house except for the existing framing. And so here is the proposal for uh, the second floor, uh, the master bedroom upstairs, the bath, a second bathroom. And then here in the green behind the firewall, uh, you see the apartment. So it is a one bedroom apartment. It's seven hundred and twenty-four point six five square feet according to the plan. Access stairs we talked about before to come up here with an access door here. And yeah, a second set of stairs here to come into the kitchen and dining room area. Uh, the house is a proper size. The unit is a proper size. Uh, and uh, they have uh, worked pretty hard to get to this point. We do have a couple of things that we have talked to town council about that have also shared with the board. One being that in order to extinguish the existing special permit, town council has recommended that they draft a letter uh, that I'll be helping them with. The town council reviewed to file with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, extinguishing all rights and privileges to the existing special permit. Were, and and typically the way you get rid of a special permit is to file a new special permit. But the ZBA isn't a special grant authority for a detached or an attached unit. So you would sort of be filing a special permit to say, we'd like to do nothing. Uh, and council's recommendation was, uh, let's put this letter together. Let's file it with the uh, with the decision. And so that's the tact that we're taking. Accessory housing unit attached within the house, seven hundred and twenty-four square feet below the thirty-nine percent, below the uh, the uh, the maximum percentage for the house. Also, I've asked and talked to Scott McGann about the uh, septic system. As you know, the septic system has failed and the time to replace the septic system has expired. And talking to Scott and being on the site with him and showing the pictures and he went out to the site, he says that he's not going to be uh, taking any enforcement action over the septic system, but they are going to have to apply. Uh, we've talked about that. They're hiring their engineer to draw those plans and there will be a septic system application in as well. We hope to have all those things in uh, by December eighth. And we hope the planning board will be able to uh, vote a a positive recommendation on this structure. It's exactly what the town, I think, is looking for, is trying to create those livable spaces or working families. Uh, and it shouldn't, we shouldn't, we like to think that not everybody has a tom bunker that they can bring on to the plan and 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 do those sort of things. So uh, uh, these folks have been working very hard to try to get this done and I would very much like to see the board be able to approve this on the eighth, uh, so they can get busy starting their construction. And not that they're gonna have, uh, you know, a a Christmas Eve move in, but at least on Christmas Eve, uh, you know, there'll be a little something under the tree, you know, uh, the ability to have a a permit to uh, do the work on their, on their house and their accessory apartment. Uh, I'm gonna sh- stop sharing so you can see everybody, but I'll be happy to bring that back up uh, for any questions or comments from the board.
Okay, any board members have any questions or comments? Bob?
I I'd just say that uh, we should let Tom run with this and do whatever he can to to make this happen, to bring us a a positive motion for the eighth.
Paul?
Yeah, I I was at there twice because I was very confused on what they were trying to do with this comparison you put together. It's a big help. The other question I have is there is another structure on the site. And it almost looks like another accessory apartment. There's electricity, there's big doors that would open. Looks like a workshop and maybe even a living area next to it. How does that fit in with the plans for the main house?
Batania, can you talk about the other structure on the property?
Yes.
Uh, the garage?
Yes.
Well, when we bought, like I mentioned, when we bought the house, we didn't do anything in the garage because unfortunately we cannot afford to do anything. It's like we are hardly trying to do something in the first floor of the house and the second floor of the house. That garage when we bought was there. Uh, we saw some instr- um, it, there are nothing there. We are, I think the, the guys who who were doing the demolition there, they were setting things. I believe the previous owner was using the garage as a mechanic place because when he bought, we saw a lot of old cars, a lot of um, pieces from cars there that they removed later. But we, the garage was there. And I don't know what, like, it's a garage. It's, there are nothing we can do about it. We don't have budget to do. Like Tom asked me if I can have, if I wanna do a bathroom in the basement, I cannot afford. I I, we are struggling to keep the uh, keep going with the construction in the first and the second floor. When I was talking to my neighbors for the first um, hearing, I knocked everyone door to ask their names and address to send, to give to the town for us to have the hearing. And they made me that the previous owner built a second apartment in a basement. Because the apartment, the, the uh, the in-law apartment was in the second floor as it is now, the plan. Uh, the apartment was there. But we saw the, the framing and the tub, old tub there for, uh, in a basement. And uh, my neighbors, they told me that the previous owner, he built a second apartment, I mean, the third apartment in a basement for his son. And I know, and they told me was illegal because that house just can have one in-law apartment to the second one. But I didn't see a part, just saw the plumber and the old tub, old uh, old thing there. We, that we rip out everything and the garage, it's, there was nothing there. And it's just a garage that we cannot do anything there now.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I was just asking because it's a very unusual structure, very, very high ceilings. And the doors are huge. It's almost like it was built to repair boats or something big like that. It looks like there's three phase electricity in there, so it was a working area. But there's also a little alcove there and I was curious whether that was gonna be developed into another accessory apartments on the site. If you're leaving it the way it is, that's fine. I uh.
But no, we can only have one accessory apartment. Paul, we can only have one accessory apartment on a site.
I know that.
Okay.
But the um, it has some very bad shape, so it would help the neighborhood to have this project move forward. So I encourage you to do so.
Charlotte, you have something?
Yes, they, if if they were to do anything with the garage, they'd have to come back and it would be considered at that time. I want to say that I'm really sorry um, that you have run into such a thicket of of red tape trying to get a a new housing for your family here in Falmouth. I I'm really sorry that happened. And I hope that we can do everything we can now to expedite the approval and get you going.
Mm-hmm. Does anybody else on the board have anything to say? Okay, because I believe there are some people in the audience who are here for this purpose and may wish to say something.
Yeah, I see nothing in the chat.
Well, we've got a list of twenty participants. They're there for some reason. Okay, Melissa, she wants to comment. Melissa Freitag. So can she be elevated?
Uh, we would typically do it through the chat, but if you'd like to elevate Melissa, that's uh.
Yeah, she says, can you promote her? Oh, and Ed Hadad just asked to come up too. Hi, Melissa.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Hello, Batania. It's nice to see you. I'm I'm Melissa Freitag. I live at nineteen Andy's Lane. Can you all hear me all right?
Yes, yes.
But we are the next door neighbors um, on lot eleven to this property. And my husband and I had a couple of concerns, as did the neighbors. But as Mr. Bott and um, Batania and Garrison have changed the plans and they were not posted on the planning board's website in in advance, several of our comments are um, moot at the moment. So um, we're wondering actually why we never received notice about tonight's hearing. Um, as of Saturday, nobody in the cul-de-sac had received any forewarning about this e- hearing. I heard about it through Mr. Dryer. Thank you very much. So is it protocol to continue to to inform people of a new hearing when plans have changed? Mr. Bott?
Uh, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, please, Tom.
It is not. The only publication is at the initial opening of the of the of the meeting. And then when things are continued, uh, it's on the agenda, but there's no second notice to a butters or or anything like that. We have had instances before where there are some projects that have been long running, where we have asked, people have asked to be kept informed. But uh, the the standard is uh, advertise for the opening of the hearing. Uh, and then the continuation dates uh, are just on the agenda uh, and posted on the website.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. I guess um, really our concerns had a lot to do with the num- uh, with the original plans, with the number of bedrooms involved. And um, also with the size of the lot and the failed septic that has been odoriferous for several summers. Of course, not last summer because no. for several summers. Of course, not last summer because nobody was in the house. Um, I could, as the neighbor, clarify the use of the barn structure in the backyard and also of the man cave for the son that was in the basement. It was just used as a, um, as, as a hangout for a teenage son. And, and Batania, I'm sorry that you had to go through all this for your house. We can empathize with it, but we just want to make sure that the neighborhood stays as a, as a neighborhood of single-family houses. Um, the original renderings had the exterior um, show stairways, a staircase up the front of the house on the basically street front. The original house, um, and I believe it's still there, has a staircase in the back end of the house that abuts town conservation land and sort of winds its way up over the deck. Um, the, Mr. Bott, we, on the renderings that you just have, we don't see the actual exterior front of the house. Um, but with plans, Plan Number One, the exterior stairways definitely makes the place look like a multifamily house. And if I'm not mistaken, the bylaws, the accessory apartment bylaws is, I'm sure you're all familiar with, Sections two forty dash three A, two forty dash six-six D and two forty dash seven D, say that, um, an accessory apartment is constructed so as to maintain the appearance and essential character of a single-family dwelling or accessory structure there too, on the lot. And those extra stairways out in the front certainly make it look like it's a multifamily household, as opposed to being tucked in the back of the property, sort of down by where the barn is. I, it's, it's difficult to, to make comments when we don't have the plans in front of us right now. Um, hoping that those plans will be up sooner rather than later. Um, a couple of other things in the, um, the renderings, I don't, I didn't see the second floor renderings that well that Mr. Bott just showed. Oh, if you could repost those, that would be nice.
I'm going to bring them right back up.
Thank you very much, sir. There was a bump out in the accessory apartment that doesn't exist right now. So the existing second floor plan. Uh, if you look at what would be, well, it looks like a bedroom on the top that's on the end of the house, sort of the, we'll call it the northwest corner of the house. There's a bump out. And in the proposed second floor plan, okay, that bump out's not there anymore. The bump out in the existing second floor plan actually isn't there. Um, the original owner of the house, this house was originally a three-bedroom house. A three-bedroom cape with two bedrooms upstairs and one bedroom downstairs. And he added a, um, a great room off the house. And when he added the great room, he poached half of a bedroom from upstairs to ex- expand the area in the great room, um, above the great room. So that it was sort of apartment-sized and there was always a single man living up there. Um, so it was a three-bedroom house originally, but there was no bump out as, um, is written in the existing second floor plan. Also, um, the dormer at the front of the house wasn't there in the existing second floor. Yeah, okay. So you've got that correct rendering there. Um,
I'm going to get you to the picture. We'll go ahead, please.
Yeah, no, it's okay. Um, it would be, I'm sorry, I can't see the renderings very well. I mean, right now it's, it's been reduced to a four-bedroom place to, in total, right?
That's correct.
Three in the main house and one in the accessory apartment?
That's correct.
Okay, so that makes a lot of our point, our concerns moot. I guess the concern that the, that the neighbors have, or at least had on Saturday, when I last spoke with them, was that, um, we were afraid that the place was turning into a three, a three-apartment house. Um, based, and I hope that any ruling will prohibit that. But those stairs going up the front of the house.
Yes, I want to say these stairs here are within the house.
Well, those are there. I, I know that. The other ones that are L-shaped?
These here, yes.
Those there. Um, currently, the access to the room above the great room are off the back of the house. So the, um, the stairs, the, the stairs in purple that are adjacent to what looks like a kitchen in the accessory apartment actually has a door at the end of that and it goes out to a deck area. Could we not have um, entrance or a secondary entrance or exit to the house off the back as opposed to off the front of the house? So it's not street view. Um, emergency exit looks like a two-family house?
Well, the, the issue is, is that the grades and the, uh, or things drop off at the back. You could likely try to put something there, but you've got to have some separation between where the two sets of stairs are. Originally, the stairs were closer and I believe, Batania, you can correct me, that the building commissioner wanted some separation between those stairs. We look at what's on the backside of the house. We have the kitchen and the living, uh, in the living room here.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So this hallway, uh, that's in between those was the, uh, was the spot that they chose to put one in at. Uh, and whether that, uh, and I'll have to go back and take a look to see, uh, and I guess it's the recommendation of the board, if that exterior set of stairs renders the house looking anything like a, a single-family dwelling. But, uh, Plan A from Batania's in a line discussion on the site was to put the stairs out here on the, on the, uh, side. What's the side of the house, uh, but looks like the back from the entrance. There just wasn't enough room to run the stairs out that way, uh, it, it would approach upon the setback.
Yeah, because the house is already within ten feet of our property line.
Correct.
Yeah, there used to be a fence along the property line and, um, we took it down when, um, the prior owner sold the place because it was, the fence was collapsing. Um, okay, the, the garage, to answer everyone's questions about what that was, the, um, the prior owner had sort of a hobby mechanic shop in it. So it, it indeed was a hobby mechanic shop. That also approaches upon town property. So, um, it's, it's more than ten feet from the, from the town property and out back and, um, might pose a problem. But again, I mean, we hope to be able to, to welcome Batania and family to the neighborhood, but just we'd really like to keep it as a single-family house owner occupied with a small accessory apartment in it. And it seems to be that the plans that you just presented, Mr. Bott and, and Batania do that. So it should be okay, but I think the neighborhood would like to been able to look at the plans first and be here tonight. Um, at least I'm here.
Melissa, you know, Town Hall is open now, so these plans can be looked at in Town Hall.
Okay, that's good to know. That's good to know. Thank you.
Typically, they would be posted. I, my apologies. We actually received these plans a, a, a bit late. The board typically has a policy that anything that's not in by Thursday at three o'clock doesn't go on the agenda. But I, uh, I asked the chair, uh, well, I don't know if I asked, I sort of said,
Kind of said.
Uh, she was gracious in my request, I'll say that, in allowing them to send the plans. I'd asked for them on Friday. Uh, the person who's drawing the plans for them works for an architect, but he's not an architect. He's just a, a kid with, uh, with a, a software to put this together. He just said there was no way he'd get them for me Friday. So they arrived here on, uh, Monday. Uh, Batania took a boat across to bring them to me, uh, as well as emailed them to me, so we could talk about what the plans were.
Well, then my request that the plans be posted before this, um, before, or in, in, in short time, so that neighbors can look at this and, and attend the next meeting when the planning board appears to be making a decision?
Yeah, we'll have them up tomorrow. Assuming they are, assuming our internet's back up, and it is now, but yeah, I'll ask, I'll ask Melinda to post them tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. I think, I think that covers it. Is that, my husband's nodding. Yeah, that covers it. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Of course, Melissa.
Okay, I'll see you. Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay. Now, Ed Hadad said he did not want to speak to this issue, so we can un-elevate him. Um, is there anybody else who wishes to participate from the participants? No? Okay. Then again, as the previous one, we will continue this site plan review until December eighth. And I encourage the people from the neighborhood to, they'll be online, but you can also go up to the planning office to look at them. Um, and hopefully we will have everything in hand to be able to make a decision at that point. Okay? Thank you all. All right.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Oh, you have a lovely one too. Okay. Bye-bye. Um, we're moving on now to planning board discussion. And we have the multifamily housing bylaw follow-up. And I'm assuming it's members of the committee, but, um, John has not made it back yet from Boston, so that's Jim and Charlotte doing the report on it.
Uh, could we ask Tom, uh, to review with the, uh, with the rest of the board? Uh, Iri Mon's, um, response there, uh, what the, the town council's office had about the bylaw is drafted. And then I think we'll probably want to continue it to another time because we're, uh, meeting with some other people about this tomorrow and we'll have more information after that meeting.
Okay, and there's something else that you all should have too, that just came through late today. And that, uh, is Michael Galasso, who has suggestions which Tom can forward on to you. I could read it tonight, so you will get the sense of what this is and what he's thought about and you can think about it overnight.
Thank you.
So. So Tom, you're taking this now with Iri's comments?
Yes, ma'am. I, I did hear that. Uh, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm going to get that, uh,
Well, are you going to, are you going, plan to read it or summarize it or what?
I'm, I'm going to summarize it for you.
Okay.
Once again, we, uh, we're a little out of, uh,
Well, while he's, while he's getting organized to do that, could I just say for the purposes of the, the rest of the board and the public, we have re-titled this. This began as our multifamily uh, bylaw. But following along with the Nantucket bylaw that we're patterning this on, we renamed it um, as the, uh, workforce and senior, uh, rental overlay district. So it's workforce, Falmouth Senior and Workforce Rental Overlay District, borrowing that from, uh, a bylaw in the title, from a bylaw in Nantucket, which has been approved not only by the town but by the Attorney General.
So we got the title, an approved title at this point, right?
We do. Um, just as a little background, as Tom, uh, is summarizing what our town council has to say. Once again, while we wait at the, oh, you ready?
Somebody, somebody have the Jeopardy music in honor of Alex Trebek while I'm looking for this.
Well, you know what, I can, I can read Michael Galasso's comments. He said he was going to try to join us tonight on, on Zoom in case we have any questions, but this came through late. Pardon?
Michael is in the audience, I believe.
Yes, okay. Well, these are comments. He said, I had an opportunity at the recent Affordable Housing Committee to a meeting to provide comments on your recent draft and was asked by one of your board members to forward those comments on to you and to address any questions you may have at your meeting this evening. Um, first, I want to thank the board and those members who have worked on this draft. As a member of the, of the EDIC and a developer of affordable housing, the proposed district is desperately needed to assist in producing more affordable and market-rate housing in our community. One, incentives. Your first paragraph states that the purpose of the district is to incentivize developers and property owners to build multifamily dwellings. I don't believe that just allowing additional density is enough of an incentive to get the results, more housing, we are envisioning. I would suggest, uh, including the inclusion of some financial incentives, such as the town agreeing not to tax the new units for a period of ten years after the occupancy permit is issued and the units are added to the town subsidized inventory list. The town should also consider reducing or eliminating all development and building permit fees, including any costs associated with connecting to the town sewer system. Also, since the cost of developing denser housing is higher than typical single-family or duplex-type housing, a portion of the affordable how, uh, the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund should be set aside just for new multifamily housing in the proposed district. The town should also set aside a percentage of the affordable housing funds to be used exclusively for developing these projects, which will assist the developer in leveraging the town's funds with other state and national funding sources, which will be needed for these developments to be financially feasible. Two, under uses, Paragraph Five, I'd suggest that along with the maximum number of units, you consider a minimum number of units. So when these properties are redeveloped, the owner understands it must include a minimum number of housing units. Three, parking. The number of parking spaces required to be included onsite can be detrimental to the number of housing units that can be developed, especially on smaller infill lots. I suggest that along transit corridors, the number of onsite parking spaces be drastically reduced or eliminated as long as the developer provides alternatives such as bus passes for tenants, shared onsite electric cars available only for tenants to use in town, shared electric and regular bicycles, and adequate bicycle storage lockers. Design. Since many of these new developments slash redevelopments are along our very visible transit corridors, I'd suggest that along with the overlay zone you develop, possible with the assistance of the Cape Cod Commission, a design guideline booklet that illustrates the type of developments the town would like to see developed. We've had several mixed-use developments built along our Main Street the past few years, which I don't believe reflect the quality of the type of development you'd like to see developed using this overlay district. I think the best way to obtain the results you'd like is that you provide property owners, developers, and architects with a design handbook for them to use in developing their proposal. In the long run, it could save you time in reviewing these projects and hopefully reduce the need for multiple design review hearings. And as I said, he was going to be in the audience tonight if you have any questions about that. But considering the fact that it was not disseminated to the full board, I think it would be appropriate for Tom to send this out and in particular for the three committee members to be able to contemplate this. But the two of you who are here, do you have any questions for Michael tonight, I would say? Charlotte?
I don't have a question. I do want to say that those are very helpful comments and to thank him for them. And it, it points out that we need design guidelines. He, he may not be aware, because we have not publicized it, that we, in, in fact, as a board, adopted design guidelines and we are waiting to change the illustrations in them in order to print them and hand them out. And we really need to step up that project because they're already there. We've got them. I think that he would appreciate them. They're based on work that the Cape Cod Commission has done, so we are well on the way there. In addition, should we ever go forward with form-based zoning, it would respond exactly to what Mr. Glasgow is saying.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and John has now joined us. So.
Welcome, John.
Thank you.
That, those were Mike Galasso's comments in regard to the multifamily housing, John. And Tom will have to forward them to everybody. They did come in. I don't, I don't remember. I think it was quarter of three or three forty-five this afternoon. So, you know, not,
I got them.
Yeah, I believe they're, I believe they're in your inbox now. I had asked, word of map, or they, right after they came in.
Oh, all right, great. John?
I, I, I listened to the comments and I would like to just make one comment and that is the way, uh, uh, we're designing this bylaw. Um, the increased density is going to be all that any developer or property owner is going to need for a financial incentive. We won't need any town funding, won't need any state funding, won't need any, uh, funding at all. This is going to be a standalone uh, bylaw and, and it will work, work very well for every property owner that decides to use it. Presuming that we get it approved and passed by town meeting and by, by the Commonwealth.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Sure. Tom, are you ready now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
So, uh, two things, when, uh, we, we did forward the, the bylaw to town council, the, the latest version, senior workforce and rental housing. Uh, and when Charlotte and I chatted, uh, briefly at the very brief town meeting that we had the other night, and she told me that, uh, she, uh, uh, got this, uh, this idea from Nantucket. I did send an email to Andrew Forti, who I've known for a number of years, uh, and ask him about the bylaw. Uh, I haven't heard back from him, uh, and, and, uh, I, I'm not too surprised, uh, because people tend to be, well, I, I know I always get back to things right away. But I had the great benefit of being at a planner's meeting with Andrew the next day on Zoom and only embarrassed him a little bit when we were introducing each other, go Andrew, nice to see you. I sent you an email. He goes, I know, I know, I know. So, uh, so I did ask Andrew about, particularly about the application for this for Nantucket. But as I had talked with the board previously, I had some concerns about whether we could actually zone for apartments for rental only. So town council's memo that you've also received So town council's memo that you've also received along with the bylaw, to Iri's point, she says, the question addressed in this memo is whether the proposed bylaw falls within the proper scope of the town zoning powers where it distinguishes between rental housing occupied pursuant rental contracts and rental housing occupied direct ownership. So in plain speak, whether you can make a difference between rental and owner occupied. Iri's conclusion after a couple pages, for that reason, I concluded the proposed senior workforce rental housing overlay district bylaw exceeds the permissible scope of municipal zoning authority by regulating private civil relationships arising from ownership rather than use of multifamily residential housing. But once again, to put that in more planning, she doesn't believe that we have the power to zone for apartments. Use own for bulk size setbacks and uses. But the type of ownership, which is why you don't tend to see the word condos in a zoning bylaw, they tend to be townhouses, condos is a form of ownership. So we call them condos and we see townhouses. But it was always been my impression that you cannot rent, you cannot zone for, for rental only. And that is the opinion of council. John had mentioned in an email that he had some, some idea about, about how we might work through that. But at the present time, I don't know that we can do a zoning bylaw for rental only. That's the opinion of council.
Pam?
Why does it have to be, I mean, a multifamily zone doesn't have to exclude other things? I mean, it can be, I mean, we want as many rentals as we can have here because we need them. But if there were some ownership involved, would that change the entire complexion of the bylaw?
Well, the, the point, I think Iri's point is that you can zone for multifamily. You can say on these blocks on Main Street, you can put 20 units per acre. You can put 20 units per acre with zero parking. You can put 20 units per acre with zero parking spaces. But you can't put 20 units per acre and say they must be rental. She's saying that steps across the line of what you're allowed to do under the zoning powers in Massachusetts.
But you could have mixed, you could have mixed rental and ownership on that acre.
You, you could and you can, but you can't require one or the other.
Bob?
You can't require it to be rental. According to.
I think that's where some of the incentives that Mike brought forth might come into play.
Right.
If, if you agree to build rental units, then you will get a tax break or you will get some other break or incentive to do that. Because we just can't create a zone that's rental only.
But can you? Go ahead, Tom.
Along that line, that's why in 40B, the incentive under the 40B law is that you do rental. The town gets the benefit of 100% of the units, even though only 25% are affordable on the subsidized housing inventory. As an incentive for the developer, because towns typically have some pushback from, from a 40B because of the density. So it's my understanding that the reason that that is in there, that calculus is in there is to incentivize towns to welcome rental housing in order to inflate their subsidized housing inventory, even though the actual number of affordable units isn't any different. Under 40R, there is a bit of a difference. It's 20% for rental rather than 25% for rental. But there's incentives in the bylaw under 40B without very sketching out that, you know, it must be, must be rental.
Charlotte?
Um, could, two things. First, could we conclude from this letter from town council that their only objection to what we've proposed so far to our draft is the ownership issue?
I would conclude that.
You would? Okay, that's really helpful. And the, the other point I'd like to make is at this very same town meeting that didn't take place, Frank Duffy, of course, was there and I took the opportunity to ask him about this bylaw because it's much on my mind. And he said he was not familiar with the Nantucket bylaw. He knew that Cambridge had one, but Cambridge doesn't count because they have special laws in Cambridge. But he would look into the Nantucket bylaw, so he might be informed by that. And I think that that conversation happened after this was written. It appears to be true. So we might be in for further information.
John?
I can't see how they would approve, the state attorney general would approve workforce rental housing for one community and deny it to another.
Right.
John?
So I said right from the very beginning, this is very complex and difficult. Mainly because trying to form a bylaw here where every unit that gets approved will count toward the SHI. So it's easy to get apartments and homeownership on the same property. But to get a bylaw written that allows every unit to count toward the SHI is difficult and complex and complicated and time consuming. And I think we're a lot closer to this than we are away from it. But I won't have the, the committee won't have the final answer for a little bit yet. We're working on some things and I think it's better that we let, you know, when we know, for sure.
Yes, I would like to see if we can make a request to town council to look for a positive way to make this happen and not just turning reasons why we shouldn't do it. This has been done in other areas. I know it's real easy to say, I can't do it for this reason. I'd like to see our staff and town council go out and find a way that we can copy what they've done in Nantucket, that we could bring this forward. And I'd like to ask the request to have them do some research on the, see if there is any other way and just say, no, you can't.
Charlotte?
I'd like to say that I'm finding it very positive that I agree with you, Jim. We all need to look for how to do it. But to hear that they have reduced any issue now to the single issue that we can work on, that's very helpful. It's not going to be first this and then that and then something else. Now we're down to one issue, we can resolve it.
Bob?
My only objection is, is the name. I don't think it should be called senior and workforce housing rental. I mean, why not call it Irish and workforce rental?
Right. That's more objectionable.
You know.
Unless you're Irish.
Because, I mean, that, that specifies a criteria. You have to be over 65 or are you?
55.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's criteria for that where I don't think we want to get into that.
Yeah, I liked it better multifamily.
Or even, or even just rental overlay district.
Sure.
We'd like the attorney general's approval. We thought that was really attractive.
For the record, anyone can apply, including the Irish from the old side from back in the day.
Us Irish in lots of places.
The, the purpose expressed in the, in the, in the bylaw is the purpose of the senior, the purpose of the senior workforce rental is incentivize developers and property owners to build rental dwellings to better meet Falmouth's policies concerning affordable housing to allow greater residential density and mixed use where appropriate. Allowing to encourage multiple housing opportunities, allow for more choices and provide for people at all stages of life and all levels of income. So we, we sort of express early on and we talked about in the local, in the housing production plan, the need for smaller units, the need for senior units as well. And every 40B that we get, typically we are having that same discussion. We should be looking at creating those units for those, for those demographics, those sectors of the society.
The housing element states housing for everyone, so.
Right. What you're saying, Bob, is we're segregating out two elements.
Yeah, I don't think we should, we should, we should segregate out, especially with the name of the bylaw.
John?
I'd like to thank all the board members for the support for going forward with this bylaw. And as I said, I think fairly soon we're going to have a real answer. There is an alternative. I don't want to discuss that right now. There is an alternative that works, but I'm trying to, we're trying to put something together here that would be kind of unique. And we'll see if we can get it accomplished or not, but just a couple more things to get cleared up and then we can report to the board.
Okay. John, do you see that this should be back on the agenda on the 8th?
No.
Okay, so it's not going to be on the agenda on the 8th?
No, but by the 8th, by the 8th, I can tell you when it should be on the agenda.
Okay. Charlotte was looking a little bit nonplussed there, so.
Would be clarified.
Well, I, I still have a full-time job, so.
Yeah.
I just need a little extra time. Thank you.
Paul, and you're on mute. So unmute yourself.
I just have a comment on the draft overlay district document that was attached to the letter from town council.
Right.
It appears that item six and item 13 are identical. Yes, the use should not be 20 units per acre. It should probably be a dimensional requirement. So I should just maybe be item six and.
Oh, yeah. Repeated. You're right. Thank you, Paul, for that. And Jim, you had a comment or question?
I always like to keep things on the agenda just in case something comes up and we don't actually have to talk about it. But when I was chairman, Form Based Code was always on the agenda and if we didn't talk about it, we didn't talk about it. But that keeps things moving. That's just a suggestion.
Well, we could put it on the agenda for the 8th and then say we have nothing further to report at this time. Does the board want to do that? Tom?
Typically, when we're talking about our big picture issues, we do that on our third meeting, which would be December 15th. You sort of plugged it in tonight to try to move the ball along here, but John says by the 8th he'll know. We could probably project that we would be able to put it on the big picture agenda for the 15th.
Okay, for sure. That sounds about right, John, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so for the 15th, we will have it on as part of that meeting. Okay, thank you all for that. Yes, Pam?
I have to believe that there are communities that have created a bylaw that provides for the rentals that we desperately need and somehow separates out within a whole zone purchase versus rental. I mean, we have 351 cities and towns in this Commonwealth. Because we were talking about it at the Affordable Housing Committee meeting, obviously. And obviously, everyone's anxious to get this going so we can provide housing. But I, it's hard for me to believe that there are not other communities that have already done this. I always feel like we're spinning our wheels instead of researching what we should be researching. So I will start again. I had begun doing it, but I'm going to start it up again.
Okay, thank you. So we'll see this again on the 15th. We have the referral letters to the zoning board of appeals. Oh, wait a minute, I'm missing something here. Sorry, I skipped that. Request for administrative approval, 533 Woodsole Road. And I believe Kevin Clower is here.
Yes, if we could elevate Kevin Clower and Ro Lizardi.
Remember that we made certain requests of Kevin to differentiate how this is different, so it's easy to see. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Bear with me for one second, just as I kind of get my bearings here. See if we need anyone else.
Is Kent Duckworth part of your people?
Yeah, Kent Duckham is, is with us as well.
Kent Duckham. So if we could promote Kent Duckham as well, Justin.
So, as you know, we were here a few, let me back up. But for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amet Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicant. What's Whole Partners LLC. I'm sorry, it's been a long day already. We're here tonight for seeking an administrative approval for the site plan review that was approved about a year ago, a little more. And there's been, as we've gone through the permitting process with zoning, planning, and eventually historic, there were minute tweaks that were made to the plans. None of these changes in and of themselves were substantial, even collectively, they're not a substantial change. They're all very minor changes. And we've submitted a summary of those changes to the board as well as plans seeking to highlight what those changes are. I'm happy to try to go through some of them. I think, I think the, the end result, what, what we, as I said, this is a push and pull. And there was some increasing in building areas. There was reduction in building areas, increasing in walkways, decreasing in walkways. The net result was that there's actually a 253 square foot decrease in overall building footprint. And there's a 277 square foot decrease in driveway walking, walkway parking areas. So the end result is, is actually a small, smaller, more tailored project. But again, it's, it's really essentially the same. So I think the easiest thing to do is going to be to share my screen and you're probably going to get a few shots of my forehead as I try to squint to make things out and I apologize for that. But what we've done is we've submitted a, a site plan, trying to kind of bubble, show, show some of the changes here. And what we're showing is we've circled the areas that have had some alterations. So over here on the dome where my cursor is right now, the, the addition area of the dome, the new area, has increased by about 100 square feet. And there's a 27 square foot increase in the walkways that lead up to it right here. In building C and D, which are these two buildings down here, kind of the southeastern side of the lot. Building C's footprint was reduced by 14 square feet and the building came up a foot. The driveway pavement was reduced by 15 square feet. Building D had an increase of 91 square feet, although the driveway pavement reduced by 23 square feet. Building E, which is the, this larger building right here, closest to the dome, that building footprint was reduced by 430 square feet. As I go through in the summary of changes, there are some other changes. The garage slab elevation was lowered. The drainage system was modified to accommodate the lower elevations. The, the building itself has moved further away from the dome than was originally proposed. The driveway area increased slightly by 274 square feet, but the, the parking area was reduced by 540 square feet. That's the bulk of the changes here on the site plan. There were a number of architectural changes, all of which were made to accommodate the historical, historical commission. We sought to address their concerns. We can go through those plans, but that's much more extensive. But again, the, the nature, overall nature of the buildings and the design of the buildings remains the same. The, those changes were simply aesthetic and designed for the most part. So I don't want to belabor the point because I think that this is, is fairly, fairly simple. But I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have. And if I can't, perhaps Raul or Kent would be able to.
Well, one of the questions that came up that has been answered by engineering is whether any of the drainage calculations needed to be changed and the answer was no, they were fine. So that was the critical thing that I believe Tom had a question of and I think Paul wondered that also. Now, does anybody else on the board have any questions of Kevin? And Jim Fox has recused himself. You can see that static picture there now. All right, so what we want to do then is to allow Tom and others, and Michaela to give administrative approval for any of this going forward, rather than having to bring it back to the board and open up new hearings. Are there any comments by board? Yes, Charlotte?
It's not premature. I'd like a move that we do that.
Oh, I don't think it's premature. We were wanting to have what Kevin just brought before us. Okay, so Charlotte has moved that we allow administrative approval for any actions on this.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Paul?
I was going to second.
Oh, okay. Are there any further comments on that?
That's over there.
Okay, then please show yes by raising your hand that you approve of an administrative approval. Okay, so all six of us who are here right now are in favor of it and Jim has recused himself.
We hope to see it soon.
Thank you, thank you all very much. We appreciate your time and I wish you all. Thank you. Thank you all very much. We appreciate your time, and I wish you all a very happy and healthy and safe Thanksgiving.
And we wish you all that as well.
Same to you.
Madam Chairman, I just want to make a comment. Kevin, when he walks around now, I don't know if you've seen him with his family, but he leads a parade with his kids when he goes through downtown. I see him walking around Main Street. You see Kevin, and you see the whole road, and it's really amazing.
He's going to be one of the larger family pods gathering for Thanksgiving.
Well, you know, just my family, six people, so we're pushing state guidelines.
You're right up there with Make Way for Ducklings, Kevin.
Well, I was almost thinking of that.
So happy Thanksgiving to you all. Good night. Okay, now we have the referral letters to the zoning board of appeals. And I probably, should I read them aloud? Does that make sense? Because our listening audience won't know what we're saying.
You could summarize.
Pardon?
You can just summarize.
They're very short. This is to Rebecca Anne Lane, known as Cardinal Place. The To Rebecca Anne Lane project was discussed at the one-ten, or excuse me, eleven-ten Planning Board meeting, following a site visit. And the board had the following comments and concerns regarding the project. The planning board stated that the proposed project is in line with what the planning board is looking for in an affordable housing project. The board members did discuss, though, that they would like to see the parking and all that pavement not be directly in front of the property. Also, the board wanted to see shared driveways as opposed to the larger parking areas as currently shown on the plans. The board felt moving the pavement and making shared driveways would help make the neighborhood feel more unified and cohesive. This would allow the proposed project to feel in line with the residential neighborhood across the street. Additionally, by pulling the buildings closer to the roadway and reconfiguring the pavement, this may allow for slightly larger backyards and added buffering for the houses behind the project. The board did note that they were very supportive of the fact that all of the units would be rental and would mean that all of the units would be eligible to go on the town's S H I. The board also noted that the conditions for the location as stated in the Falmouth Housing Production Plan are met with this location. The board felt its proximity to a supermarket, transportation, other amenities that are of interest to town residents, as well as being in a neighborhood, all comported with the approved HPP. Does anybody wish to add anything else to this letter? Or make any comments on anything that was? Yes, Paul?
I have a question on the third paragraph where it talks about the board is representing itself as making the neighborhood appear more unified. I don't think we feel that way. I think we might say neighborhood appear more unified and cohesive.
Appear. I think that's a correct. Put the word appear in there. Remember, we are advising the zoning board of appeals. They will be making the decision on this. And they really do welcome the comments that we make to them, especially from a site plan review perspective, because they don't have that experience like we do. So does anybody else have any commentary on this particular one? Okay, so that's in line with what we discussed. Okay, the next one is Zero Percival Road, Falmouth, known as Rosewood. Again, we met there on November tenth, and these are the comments. The planning board stated that the developer is going to make vast improvements over Percival Road, and the town does need affordable housing, and therefore, the planning board does support the proposed project. The board members did discuss, though, that they did not feel that the proposed density was in line with the character of the neighborhood or the surrounding area. The proposed sixteen lots was too dense and would result in too many trees needing to be cut down for the area. The board also discussed that the road is basically a one-way street. The road ends in a very narrow, small manner, and the access is poor. Cars are unable to pass by each other in the current street with existing conditions as they are. The board felt adding sixteen units to an essentially one-way street would only further crowd the road. The planning board also felt that if the zoning board of appeals is going to make a connection, if at all, through Harness Drive, then it should be an emergency-only access point. The connection should have a gate across it for emergency vehicles only and not be utilized as a common access for people due to the amount of daycares on the road with thirty-plus young people in attendance. Lastly, the board also noticed, noted that the conditions for the location, as stated in the Falmouth Housing Production Plan, are not met with this location. The board stated it did not meet the plan in regards to serviceability, transportation, and location. They felt that it was too far from amenities such as shopping centers, schools, library, or other points of interest to exist without a car, and that they would prefer to see forty B applications that do coincide and align with the approved HPP. Any comments on this one?
Stated.
Okay, I do have a couple that we did bring up. I don't know whether it was when we were all gathered around or not. But we had talked about the length of the road and the darkness and kids being on it. And we're adding sixteen more houses. We wanted to see lighting along there. We'd like to see a sidewalk along there, so they didn't have to walk in the road. And there is also some concern because of the narrowness of the lots that they were going, and the smallness, the amount of the density, that they were going to have to essentially strip the property of all plantings to be able to build. And we wanted to see a generous replanting plan, I think would be the way to state it. So that at the very least, the neighbors that would back up to them would have a little bit of shielding along that property line. Am I misreading? A buffer. Thank you, Pam. So did I fairly state that from those of us who were there gathered around? Yes, Bob?
Didn't we talk about the adequacy of the road itself? Did we talk widths and?
We did.
Road layout?
We did. Because that's the first statement, and I don't think I agree with that, to make vast improvements over Percival Road. No, they would be making improvements by paving it.
Well, to what standard are we asking it to be? To subdivision standards, that twenty-two-foot, you know?
They can't do that, but do you want to state that? Maybe we should say the planning, let's see. The developer is going to make improvements, not vast improvements.
If I may?
Yes.
The plans for Rosewood for Percival Road include the developer giving up a twenty-two-foot wide easement on their property in order to create a substantial right-of-way to put in a wider road. So it won't be quite up to subdivision standard, but with what's existing on Percival as it is and the extra twenty-two feet that they are going to be creating for road layout, there will essentially be a two-lane road with adequate paving, so two vehicles can pass. So they are going to be a vast improvement of Percival at this point. But that vast improvement goes the length of the house lots, and then it evaporates into what the existing conditions are. So you'll have essentially a subdivision-style road. It may be a little narrower, but with drainage as well.
But do you like the term vast improvements? I kind of, that, I don't know. Charlotte, you raised your hand, and then Jim?
Concerning the road?
Yeah.
The road starts at one end and it exits at the other end. So it'd be like an oboe. It'd have a very narrow neck getting into it, then it will fatten up somewhat, and then narrow again. So it's really an inadequate improvement. I mean, you make it safer in front of the houses and create all the problems in the exits. Imagine having a fire there and everyone trying to leave.
So the statement might better be that although the developer will make improvements on the roadway in front of the houses, either end will not be improved and create bottlenecks.
Or maybe we say should be improved.
Bottlenecks for both exits.
Should be improved.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, that was my point. The letter starts off being, you know, when I, I'm not much of a writer, but I remembered you, expository writing, you're supposed to state what your statement is. And we start off saying there's vast improvements, and then we give all the reasons why we shouldn't do it that the planning board brought up. I think it needs to be reformatted. I'd say it's marginally improving, but here's the reasons why. But we might go along with it because we need affordable housing. It was really strong on the affordable housing, and we should do this. And then it points out all the reasons why the planning board thinks we shouldn't do it, and I found that awkward.
It should be more like improved with serious problems.
Pardon?
Improved with serious problems remaining.
Right. I'm not sure that we wholeheartedly supported it either, because of all the things that.
Yeah, the first sentence was awful, more powerful than I would ever write.
I know. That's my objection to that first sentence. It gives them the idea, hey, gung-ho, clap your hands. And I, we didn't feel that way, as far as I remember, when I was out there. So I don't know what you want to do with that sentence, but, yes, Charlotte?
Remember, while we were there, two of the neighbors came to speak with us and expressed their concerns about the road, about the ownership of where they're planning to widen the road. There's a cloud over that ownership that really hasn't been explained, at least to us. So they may be planning to widen it, but their plans seem to involve other people's land. Right. And then to strengthen the language about the reducing the number of houses and creating the buffer between the, on that road and the road behind it where the daycares are.
Yep. Bob?
And one of the other things we talked about was the added expense of having to pay for plowing.
Oh, yeah.
Because the residents do pay for plowing, because the town doesn't allow that.
Do they on Percival? I don't know. I don't, I think they do.
Yeah, they do. That was one of the chat comments.
Okay, that I didn't remember. I knew they did on Harness, but I didn't know they did on Percival. I don't know that we went into that. So Harness definitely is private. So this is not as supportive of that forty B as that first statement about it seems to indicate. Anybody else? Paul?
I hate to be picky, but the end of the fifth paragraph where it says, "due to the amount of daycares on the road." We have three of them, so I think it'd be more forceful to say, "due to the three daycare facilities on the road." I think that's more forceful than just saying the amount.
I agree with you. Thank you, Paul, to the three daycare facilities.
Not "due to," but "because of."
Because of.
Glad you're here.
Or because of the existence of the three daycares. I mean, they're there, they've been there, and.
They're not going anywhere.
Yeah.
And they don't want to endanger the kids.
Right. That was part of the issue of Trotting Park. An entrance from Trotting Park? It was just going to be, just going to be emergency vehicles or something?
Absolutely. They wanted to see, they don't support that at all. If it has to be, they wanted to see definitely a gate across it, so vehicles could not use it.
Right.
Go through.
Nor should they.
Are you taking notes down, Tom, as we're doing this?
I am actually not, but Michaela is. She drafted the letters. She asked me if I would like to take a look at them prior to the meeting. I told her I would, and then about three hours later, I said I'm not going to have an opportunity to.
Okay.
I hate to do that, but that's, those are the realities of, you know, life in the.
Yeah. Okay. So, Michaela, you are making note of all of these objections, right?
Yes, I'm making note of all the corrections and changes and objections that you guys would like for all of the.
We also usually go back and review the tape to make sure we're clear on things. And that was one of the issues when we first talked about this, is we talked about a lot of different things, and it was a little hard to synthesize all the things we talked about to get them into a letter. So kudos to Michaela for.
I've got no problem with that, okay? But a number of these things, Tom, are not going to probably show up on the tape, because these are what was being discussed out on site, too. And I don't know how much of this was put into the discussion. Charlotte?
I think somewhere I ought to say, because what we're supposed to be commenting on is whether or not there's a change in the character in addition to other things. And what we've talked about really are the practical uses of it, but not the character. It's a radical change in the character of that road. The houses that are there are on only one side of the road. They're widely spaced. They're concealed from one another by woodland and set back from the road. What's being proposed is densely packed, closer to the road, and not going to have practically any vegetative cover.
Well, and that's why I think we need to say that there has to be strong replanting.
I think we should state the problem, that it's a radical change in the character of the road. And therefore, they should, blah, blah, the rest.
That's fine. Yeah, they have to replant, and yeah.
Because we're allowed to consider character.
Oh, yeah.
Charlotte, yes, that was one thing that came up. That's why that's, that's kind of the main point in the first paragraph, after saying the planning board does support the project. But then that goes into the character of the project. And the character of the neighborhood was a large issue for the planning board. That is a large discussion in the minutes.
So as far as. As far as replanting.
We don't support the project. We support increasing the amount of housing that's available. But we think that what's being proposed has problems.
Yeah.
I can take out that the board's support of the project, my misunderstanding on that one.
Well, the thing is, it doesn't even meet the Housing Production Plan requirements. It's a long way from meeting it. But with forty Bs, we also have to understand that they're going to stick them wherever they're going to stick them, it sounds like, really. And so our job is trying to advise the ZBA, from our perspective, how it can be made better. So. Bob?
You're taking a rural road and turning it into a suburban road. So it doesn't fit in with the character. And I just think it's too dense of a project for that area. And, you know, I know it's all a numbers game, and sometimes the numbers don't work for you, and you just can't do it.
Yeah. Tom?
But if I may just offer this, back in the days of sixteen-twenty, it was all rural. And we have since built roads all over the place on dirt. And Massachusetts General Law, under subdivision, says "the planning board shall approve a subdivision plan within a hundred and forty-five days." So the roads that we have were built in places there weren't roads before. In this case, there is an existing road. They're improving the road for access-wise. So while it differentiates the character, so does taking a green field and putting a subdivision on it, which is what happens all the time. The difference here is the density and the fact that because they're putting twenty-five percent in, they don't have to play by our rules. And we can't render any conditions that render it uneconomic, which is one of the things that we looked at when I made the suggestion about connecting Harness Drive to Percival as either a subdivision road per our regulations, or at least for an emergency access. So while we are changing the character of the road by improving it for, you know, better human habitation, this is not unusual, because we do it every time we build a subdivision, anywhere in Massachusetts or in the world, for that matter.
Okay, that being said, how strong do you want this worded to send to the ZBA as a referral? Because remember, this is just a referral to the ZBA. It's their responsibility.
I say bring your game, bring everything, and let them sort it out. Let them hear the full range of your comments and concerns.
Okay, that's the way I feel about it, too. Charlotte?
And don't overstate our approval of it.
Right.
They may be able to do it, but we don't have to like it.
Right. Jim?
I think we should start off, instead of saying that we approve it, that we have serious concerns.
I think you're right.
And go through the concerns and build our statement off that first sentence, not saying, hey, the planning board's in favor of it, and then say all the other things. I just, I think there's some really serious concerns.
There are. And I like that, Jim.
And because people will follow this as a guideline for other things. We're going to be dealing with this over and over. We're gonna be dealing with this over and over again. And let's face it, the zoning board's gonna do what they want to do and they're not, they don't really always pay attention to what we say anyways, but we might as well be clear in where we're coming from and not give two different messages.
Thank you. I think that's how it should start, that we have serious concerns. I agree with you, Jim. John?
I think that we talked about character. Somewhere in this referral, we should also add that this is being developed by a well-respected local developer with a lot of experience and a lot of great character.
That's fine. We can add that.
And I, for one, think he's gonna do a terrific job over there. And you cannot pick where your affordable housing is gonna go because of the 40B law. And if there wasn't a 40B law, there wouldn't be any affordable housing. And they have profit limitations. 25% of these homes are being built at a huge loss. How do we, how do we get everything? You can't get everything. But anyway, I want to mention in the letter the character and the ability of this developer.
That's fine. We can do that, too, and we can still say we have serious concerns about aspects of the development. Has nothing to do with slamming his character or his ability as a builder.
And I know you're not, but I think we should at least say that it's a local developer, a lot of experience, and good character.
I think that's fine. Thank you, John. Anybody else? Do you want to see the letter again before we send it over to the ZBA?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll see it on, we actually could probably take this really quickly even though the next meeting is recodification. What do you say to that, Tom? Just to review it?
I think, I think that, given that it's taken a little bit to get to it, I think we can, I think, by the way, that the hearing that we opened up with the recodification went very well. And I don't know that we're gonna be talking about recodification for three hours on December 1st. Although we have been receiving some comments, we did get some comments in from Laura Moynihan this week as, because Frank Duffy Town Council sent out an email to local attorneys asking them once again to take a look at the bylaw. So we're expecting more comments from Bob Amen, who's promised to put some things together for us, and from Laura Moynihan, who may have some other things.
Very good.
So we should have time on the first to tuck this in and not keep the board out past their bedtime.
Okay, great. So we'll see it again in another week, in a revised version.
Of one.
And I think it will be much improved to meet our concerns and John's concerns. Thank you. Okay, are there any committee reports tonight? Nope. Okay. Are there any announcements tonight? Paul?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes. To the rest of the board and anybody who happens to be listening to us tonight. We hope you have a very wonderful Thanksgiving. We have no correspondence, or at least I haven't seen any. Is that correct, Tom? And we've got our future agenda items pretty well lined up, I think. Next meeting is December 1st and that's the Falmouth zoning bylaw recodification. And we really do hope that people have spent some time and looked it over. I had a comment from Patty Johnson who listened in the last time and she skimmed it. And she said, "What an improvement." I wanted to know that, okay?
Yeah.
I got the same comment from, drawing a blank, Peter. I'll get back to you.
Peter Hargreaves.
Thank you, Peter Hargreaves.
Yes, good.
Sorry, Peter, I know you watch the meetings. I'm drawing a blank there.
Jim?
I actually keep it open and use it as a reference. It's much easier than going, than looking at the old book or even going online. It's just more organized.
Yeah.
It'd be great when it's online. It'll really become a powerful tool.
Yeah. So I just thought you'd be interested in that and obviously Tom thought you'd be interested in Peter's comment, too. So at least we're getting some positive feedback on it. And I hope we get corrective feedback on it as well to make it even better than it is. And understanding that probably some of these comments are not going to be able to be tackled until phase two. They're more substantive and they take redoing of the bylaws. So, anything else? Okay, it is 8:25 and I adjourn the meeting. And a very...
Good night. Bye-bye. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Stay safe and wear your masks.
Yes.
Happy Thanksgiving. Eat hearty and give the ship a good name.